I call this meeting of the Upsher County Commission order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mike? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. I think there's a hint of spring out there. Hopefully, it'll stay that way. We have our first appointment at 9:15, so we'll proceed down to items for discussion, action approval, after Jackie reads the minutes from last meeting. The meeting cuts you short, Jackie.
Good morning, Congress. Good morning, everyone. The county commission of Upsher County, West Virginia, held a regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, March 12, 2015, at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called meetings ordered. There were present J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Troy Grady, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Commissioner Kerry Wallace, County Administrator, and Japhone Dicklocker, Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions cast unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Grady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes on March 5, 2015, as submitted. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of the announcement of the Fourth Annual CCAWV, the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia, the county government asset contest for eighth grade students across West Virginia. Monetary prizes will be awarded to the first, second, and third place student winners. There will also be a prize for the first place winner's teacher to be used for classroom activities. All entries must be emailed to vivian@ccawv.org by 5:00 p.m. on April 17, 2015. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Grady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the letter of support for the Upsher County Development Authority to include in its submission of a grant proposal for the Frontiers America's Best Communities Grant, as discussed at the February 19, 2015, meeting of the Upsher County Commission. After discussion on motion by Troy Grady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the property use agreement between the Upsher County Commission and the Upsher County Youth Baseball Association, as discussed at the February 5, 2015, meeting of the Upsher County Commission. The agreement is for the usage of property located in the Upsher County Wellness Complex in its four period of ten years. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Grady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the West Virginia Homeland Security and Emergency Management sub-grant in the amount of $31,242 for the benefit of the Office of Emergency Management. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Grady, the commission approved the resignation of Helen Phillips as Upsher County Assessor, effective March 31, 2015. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Grady, the commission approved the resignation of Deborah Barnes as Deputy Assessor, effective April 30, 2015. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Grady, the commission approved the resignation of Laura Ann Stewart as Deputy Assessor, effective March 13, 2015. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four American Commission items. Number one, correspondence from what's next, Upsher County, announcing regional meetings to discuss economic opportunities for the community. Two, correspondence from Aura L. Ash, Deputy State Auditor, announcing property tax levying rates and taxes levying for 2015 to 2016. Three, correspondence from the United States of America Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, announcing a notice of intent to prepare an environmental impact statement for the plant supply header project and Atlantic Coast Pipeline project. Request for comments on environment issues and notice of public scoping meetings. Four, correspondence from the West Virginia Development Office regarding the Eventary Proclamation of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month for the state of West Virginia and encouragement for the Upsher County Commission to do the same. J.C. Rafferty requested Kerry Wallace to follow up with preparing a fair housing resolution and plan proclamation designating April as Fair Housing Month in Upsher County. Five, correspondence from Advanced Alarm Technologies Incorporated expressing interest in bidding on future security assistance purchases. Six, Upsher County Public Library Newsletter, March to April 2015. Seven, Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility Doc Report, January, February 2015. Eight, Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility Cat Report, January, February 2015. Nine, agendas given or not as previously listed. Ten, dating minutes, non. Eleven, meetings up listed. Twelve, budget here, schedule listed. Thirteen, appointments needed are upcoming as listed. Jody Ayers and Lori Wain, Upsher County Board of Education Representatives, appeared before the commission and provided a review of the West Virginia Justice Assistance Program application. The grant request will provide resources for funding and funding the Prevention Resource Officer Program at the Bacchanal Upsher Elementary Schools, with the officer serving each school on rotational schedule. Miss Ayers reviewed data in support of the success of the program at the Bacchanal Upsher High School and Bacchanal Upsher Middle School. Mr. Roger commanded officers CJ Day and Rocky Haver for their services as PRO officers. Commissioners expressed concerns about the budget and the cost of funding and additional PRO program on the elementary school level and being able to sustain it in future years. Mr. Roger requested the commission to provide written correspondence to the Board of Education itemizing the concerns for future discussions. No action was taken at this time. J.C. Rafferty reviewed correspondence from Donald Bryce, Fraser, and Mapper in the office of the Upsher County Assessor, expressing interest in filling the upcoming vacancies of Upsher County Assessor due to the retirement of Helen Phillips. On motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Grady, the commission entered executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 for discussion. Present were J.C. Rafferty, Troy Grady, Terry Cutright, Kerry Wallace, Donald Bryce, and Helen Phillips. Mr. Bryce and Mrs. Phillips exited the meeting at 9:43 a.m. Meeting returned open session at 9:46 a.m. No decisions were made in executive session. After discussion on motion by Troy Grady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved Donald Bryce to fill the position of Upsher County Assessor as recommended by Helen Phillips, effective April 1, 2015, through the remainder of the unexpired term at the rate salary of $49,157 for West Virginia Code. Commissioners commented that Mr. Bryce's experience in the assessor's office was an important factor to the stability of the office. The commission recessed at 9:47 a.m. The commission reconvened at 9:48 a.m. Tim Higginson, Upsher County Resident, appeared before the commission and provided an update concerning the status of the West Virginia Legislature HB 2208 and SB 109, as discussed at the March 5, 2015, meeting of the Upsher County Commission. The commission recessed at 9:53 a.m. The commission reconvened at 10:12 a.m. Kathy McMurray, Executive Director of Mountain Cap, and Tracy Lloyd Carlisle, Director of the Upsher County Office, appeared before the commission as child advocacy representatives to request funding for the 2015 minus twenty sixteen fiscal year. Ms. McMurray provided data and facts and figures, noting that grants and donations are not enough and would like to see the CACS as a line item in the Upsher County budget. Commissioners commented on the importance of the Child Advocacy Center for the protection of children and advised that funding would be considered during the budget meetings. The commission approved all invoices contained, the commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved all enclosures listed, the commission approved all exemptions and all refunds listed. The commission approved all requests to attend meetings listed. With no further business, on motion of Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Grady, the commission meeting returned at 11:20 a.m. in attendance with budget hearings.
Thank you, Jackie. That was a long one today. Are there additions or corrections to the minutes as read? If not, have a request of motion to approve the meetings.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Both say no. Motion carries. Our first appointment is at 9:15. At least we've got a couple of minutes. We'll proceed down to items for discussion, action, or approval. Have a request for approval, full-time housekeeping, custodial job posting. Appointments must be received by means of business on Friday, March 27, 2015. Valid the motion to approve the posting of that. All in favor, say aye. Both say no. Motion carries. Next, we have approval and signature of a resolution declaring April 2015 as Fair Housing Month. That proclamation was prepared by our administrator in the preceding week. I've read it through, and it's a very noteworthy resolution. So, do we have approval for the signature of this thanks to that resolution?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Both say no. Motion carries. Next, we have approval and signature of a lease agreement with Xerox Corporation for a colored copy or printer for the prosecuting attorney's office. If you've read the material there, it looks like a pretty decent price per copy on that. So, do we have a motion to approve the purchase or leasing of that permit?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Both say no. Motion carries. It's now 9:15. We have scheduled Mr. Todd Gunter, who's a field representative for Senator Shelley Moore Capito. Mr. Gunter, if you can have a floor.
Laura, absolutely. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here today. As I said, my name's Todd Gunter. I'm a field representative for Senator Shelley Moore Capito. I'm very excited to be here today. Although the senator has served Upsher County fourteen years in the House of Representatives, we have been traveling around the past three months that she has taken office as U.S. Senator and have been meeting with county commissions and just trying to extend a hand and open a lot of communication, and that's why I'm here today. I just wanted to introduce myself and tell you folks that we hope to continue a relationship with the county commission and anything we can do, we really want to help as much as we can. The senator is very interested in infrastructure, so highways, waterages is going to remain a priority, and in water sewer projects, but also a fourth pillar, infrastructure being brought in. So, we're really interested in how we can help in any way possible, but especially those areas. So, if there's anything we can do, please let me know, and I will be decisive.
We will not hesitate to contact you or your office in the future. You are located up in Charleston, West Virginia.
I'm in Charleston, yes.
If you could leave your contact information with the administrator.
And I'll stick around for a bit of the meeting, and anything I can do, I'll certainly.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Gunter. Appreciate it. And good luck to your senator and our senator.
Thank you very much.
The duties. We have a few minutes yet before our next appointment. Continue with items for discussion. We have correspondents from Claus and Whiskers Rescue Foundation requesting a donation for the upcoming fundraiser benefit. First bingo, to be held on April 19, 2015, at 12:30 p.m. at the Cadence Lodge. And they're requesting a donation. I would comment that this request is coming at the end of the fiscal year. We worked on our budget last year for the next year, which takes effect July 1st. So, being at the end of the fiscal year, we have to go over our resources to find out what funding we still have available for such matters. So, I would recommend that we take this matter under advisement until we can.
This group will be open to the pool passes that you donated.
It would be, okay. So, we can't provide them pool passes. Typically, then, we give ten pool passes as a fundraiser for them. They haven't been corrected by the county administrators. We will, if there's a motion to authorize ten pool passes, single day pool passes.
All seconded.
Very good. Having been moved and seconded, all in favor of providing those pool passes, say aye. Both say no. Or the same sign, motion carries. We then now have a correspondence from Charlie Light, almost having barbecue bash, requesting in kind or financial support for the upcoming event to be held on June 19 to 20th, 2015, in Bacchanal. I noticed that the organizers, Ms. Light and Mary G., are available. Would you like to comment regarding the request of the drive the event for the public?
We do, I'm kind of excited because we do have, and I don't know if you see this very often, we do have our proclamation from the government. So, we are the West Virginia State Championship. We've also been designated barbecue championship. We've also been designated since then as the West Virginia Cup for the Mid-Atlantic Barbecue Association. I'm meeting with sixty to sixty-five rotary clubs tomorrow to invite them, because if you notice in your packet, we're not just having the pro teams. We're also having the Sunny Buck BBQ contest. So, we hope local folks, anyone that's, you know, out there that's got the best barbecue sauce so they can do some jam and ribs, we'd love to have them compete. We'll have a separate contest for the rotary clubs, and we're real excited. We added something new on Friday evening during Festival Fridays, where you know, kids queue. So, we'll have two divisions from seven to ten and eleven to fifteen, and we hope parents and grandparents will start working with their kids. The little ones will only have to do hamburgers, but they'll have to do six portions for the judges. It's going to be judged, you'll have a cooks meeting and a fire safety meeting and official lighting of the grills. So, we'll make it very official, but the little ones will do burgers, and eleven to fifteen will probably do chicken thighs as normal, make it easy. Mom and dad can help them light the grills, and then they got back off. They can cheer and root for them. Can't touch that grill, can't touch the food. So, we look for that to be a really good thing. We're just really looking at this as a wonderful family, new family, community event, celebrating West Virginia Day. We just love to draw, looking at dates as West Virginia Day. All of our signings will be outlines of West Virginia. We're working with FFA and some other groups to do that, so we're excited. The city has been wonderful working with us. I hope county commission will give us support. The sheriff has offered some, possibly a little security force, so we do have to provide a security. But we do have teams, and there was actually, and I think it was in this morning's paper, I'll do that to them. Give me one for each, I'm not going to. If you haven't seen it, I just, someone called tonight. It was a great article. Now, I actually rather me going through it, give you some information on the front page of the internet, I think it was this morning. They called yesterday, and I was kind of shocked it got in that quick. But it gives you some interesting information on the teams that are coming. We have teams from Virginia, Maryland, West Virginia, Ohio, Pennsylvania. Have some that have confirmed from Tennessee, Georgia, and one coming from South Dakota. So, these are folks that have never been, not only in Bacchanal, but to West Virginia. So, this is a time to really, really, and the article in there, actually, there was some real nice quotes from Michael Fay. He is the Mid-Atlantic Barbecue Association President. He also happens to be the 2014 Team of the Year for the Mid-Atlantic Barbecue Association, which covers eight states, and his team is Aporkalypse Now. So, we're going to have some really, and you're going to start seeing some things when you read the paper, some great names. We have Robin Murphy with Sunny, shoot, Nothing Fancy BBQ is a Bacchanal person. Has never competed. So, we're just really excited that some of these folks have had a call from Bradford, South Charleston, Morgantown, in West Virginia. So, we're, it's exciting, because some of these folks have never, ever competed, but they're just excited to get their foot in the door. They're very serious about this, the whole kicker to this thing. It says in the article in the paper that if these teams win in West Virginia, because this is the only event in West Virginia, they get an automatic entry, which is what they're striving for, to go to the Jack Daniels Invitational Tournament, BBQ tournament in October in Lynchburg. And they will be one team per state, that's it. Our team that wins here will go to Jack Daniels, and they'll compete against teams from all over the country, and they'll usually have, I think, twenty to thirty international teams that will compete. We're just looking for your support, endorsement. If you've got some money you find, you know, in someone's drawer or something, if you can help us out, that would be greatly appreciated, but we just appreciate it. And I want to see there, we have a waging contest, have a ribbing contest. And we're going to challenge the city policemen, the sheriff's department, state police, and some firefighters to see how many ribs they can do. So, it's just a good family event. Car shows confirmed, motorcycle shows confirmed, a lot of things going on with that. So, we're just real excited. Hope this will be, we know it's a meeting, and I hope it'll be a really exciting, fun event, bring people out of their houses for a good time, and celebrate West Virginia Day. We've had some really good support. The meeting has been outstanding. So, just appreciate, you know, whatever you can do.
I'm thinking, from what I gather, you're saying, would you like a proclamation from the county?
That would be lovely.
Be prepared by the most possible.
The city is going to be that, I think.
As I stated earlier, we're at the end of fiscal year, so you're still looking through the ashes.
Like I said, you've got something in the corner of your store.
We don't know what our category will be at this point with any specificity, but we won't take it under advisement. We certainly wish you the best of luck. And you've worked very hard to get to this point. I know that this will be a success, something very worthwhile for the county.
And we look forward to seeing y'all.
And while I know that it conflicts with my wedding anniversary, forty-fifth wedding anniversary.
Well, bring your dad home, he's somewhere else.
But I won't be able to eat a lot of ribs, but I'll certainly be looking.
Yes, we did, she's asking, we applied for the CD grant. We met with them yesterday. It is on the West Virginia Division of Tourism calendar already. Department of Agriculture is really helping them out, they're helping us out there, excited. So, I just never, it says in the paper, and I can't stress that enough, I've never seen as much positive support from city officials, city government, Division of Tourism, everyone I've talked to has been positive. So, we're really, really excited about this.
I would be too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you also for being able to organize the event. It's now 25 after. We have a few minutes yet before our next appointment, which will be at 9:30. We'll continue, I think, well, we've completed the items for discussion, action, approval. We move to the informational items. We have correspondence from Kelly Workman, West Virginia Development Office, regarding the U.S. Department of Labor's semi-annual labor standards enforcement report and request for a 2015 project schedule. We have correspondence from Shane Whitehair, Unit 7, Kelly Workman, West Virginia Development Office, requesting labor to submit an application for 2015 Small Cities Block Grant for implementation of the Oakland Public Service District. And Mr. Whitehair has advised that because of delays in obtaining the funding and whatnot for the sewer project for the public service district, that he's requesting extension as the funding for that project has been granted. They begin to, they will start work on the project, although it may be completed, I believe, next year.
Is that true or what?
That's what I'm saying. Did I say similar? Too many things on your mind at one point in time here. Okay, we'll then follow to the next. Correspondence from Lilos Networks regarding an increase in monthly bills due to an alignment with the accrued tariff rates. Currently, on file with the State Commission, Public Service Department, apparently, an increase in the rates for that service. They indicated that our April billing will maintain and will reflect those increases, and that should we decide to change carriers, they will not charge us for an administrative fee to disconnect or change over the service.
I spoke with Lamus. I will look back to the bill, which is at the recreational park and I'll increase by fourteen dollars.
Thank you. We have correspondence from Willis Glazer, Casey, and Rollins Law Offices regarding services offered for the collection of outstanding personal property taxes. This is a service that they are offering for various counties who have uncollected taxes. I think we've had a ninety-nine percent, is that the percentage of the sheriff's office responsible for collecting county taxes, advised that we have remarkable ninety-nine percent compliance. So, I doubt that we would need to have use of this service, but some counties, including Conoc County, they indicated, do not provide this service. Next, we have an invitation to the Pipe and Information meeting hosted by Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance and the Greenbrier River Watershed Association. This meeting will be held on Saturday, March 28, 2015, at 1:00 in the American Legion Building on Canal Street in Bacchanal. Next, we have an invitation to the Region for Thera Workshop hosted by West Virginia Homeland Security State Administration Agency and Regional Homeland Security Emergency Management. The workshop will be held on April 7, 2015, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the DOH District Headquarters in Bacchanal. The purpose of that program is to do threat analysis for potential threats, primarily and occasionally, in general, weather threats and other issues as well. Last year, that was the drought exercise. It was held later in the year. This, we had a meeting to discuss availability of water. They had representatives from the county, from water districts, city water department, to determine that we had a drought. What would we, as administrators and offices in the county and the city, do to resolve that? How would we ration water? If we were to decide to ration water, what process would we use to implement the rationing of same? And at what point would we recognize from the gauges that the city maintains and the county follows, our emergency management office, determine how we would recognize that threat in time to take steps to avoid a more serious threat? So, it's a worthwhile meeting. I don't know this year what the specific topic will be, but we'll find that out at a given time. We have our West Virginia University Extension Office Newsletter for March 2015. We have the Sheriff's Financial Statement for February 2015. We have the Lewis Upsher Animal Control Facility Fundraising Event Tracker. We have a Southern States Bingo from last year, and they set forth an explanation of funding that they received and expanded. We have the 901 Communication Center reports, and we have our notice of agendas and meetings, future meetings, as well as meeting minutes, meetings, and of course, appointments needed for the various boards. We'll be holding interviews. We started yesterday, holding interviews for the vacancy Assistant County Commissioner position. We'll include those interviews, not Assistant County Commissioner, Assistant Minister. We'll hold the final meeting on Monday at 4:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m. So, I have to be early instead of 4:00. Okay, and our next meeting will be a week from today, on March 26. It is now 9:30 on the dot, I might add. And we have Donald Delaney, who is Emergencies Site Protection LLC, and will be making a presentation of the commission regarding a proposed Upsher County location. Mr. Delaney, would you like to take the podium?
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning. I'm a guest here at the meeting. I'd like to introduce myself again. My name is Donald Delaney. I am the Ambulance Administrator for Emergencies Site Protection LLC. Also here is the Northeast Regional Director of Operations, James Zimmerman. A little bit about our company. Emergencies Site Protection is a nationally recognized company. We have offices throughout the United States, including Oklahoma, North Dakota. An office now being developed in California, plus we have a regional office here in West Virginia. We are nationally recognized as a industrial first responder, professional industrial first responder group. We provide safety professionals, fire suppression teams for both government and industrial locations and projects. What we have done in the last six months is that we have been doing a market study on an additional avenue for us to pursue within our corporation. And that avenue that we have decided to pursue over the last six months is the development of an ambulance company or an ambulance division. We're looking at this as a way to provide further services to the people that we already have contracts with and to look at other options for additional advancements through government contracts, national disaster response teams, and other things that we provide. So, what we did is we did a market study, trying to determine what area in our national company that would be a good location for us to begin the first operation or the first base. So, what we did is they had asked me to assume the role. I was actually working for them as a safety professional, and they had asked me to assume the role as the ambulance administrator. I do have to apologize, John. I do have to apologize, John Robey was going to be here today, but because of circumstances of compliance control, he had to be pulled to another location on the other side of the state. He does wish to apologize for that. A little bit more about me, I did graduate from here in Buchanan, Buchanan Upshore High School. I was a volunteer at the County Emergency Squad. I was a paramedic for them when I was the age of 19. I attended Marshall University, so I'm familiar with the area. We asked John Robey to assume the role as the local operations manager for this division that we are opening here, because of his extensive knowledge and history with the area, also with his lifelong commitment of providing to this county. So from there, what we did is we looked at the areas, and we decided that because of the recent trend in healthcare, and what I mean by that is 10, 15 years ago, you guys, this area has excellent facilities, hospital facilities, but 10, 15 years ago, when someone would have a stroke, or a heart attack, or a trauma patient, they would be admitted to one of these local hospitals because they could provide all the care that was necessary during that time. With the advancements over the years, more and more of these types of patients are being transported to other facilities, further distance away, such as Morgantown, or Charleston, or Pittsburgh. And this has happened nationally. Also, we looked at, with our market analysis, we looked at staffing. Nationally, staffing for all EMS services is not good. It is hard to get people coming to work, it's hard to be able to afford to pay paramedics what they deserve. And this is not a local thing, this is a national thing. You can go on many national websites and see that the American Ambulance Association is trying to improve on this, and so is everybody else. But it's hard for services. So what we decided was that we were looking for an area that we would like to begin the service, and we are not looking for a specific location, we were looking for a regional area because we provide a regional type company. So the area that we looked at was the north central West Virginia area, and the reason is because of these outlined hospitals and the transfers that they're making to other facilities. And with that, we looked at the fact that Upshore County is pretty much a central location in that area. We would like to start an ambulance company to provide interfacility transfers. We are not, and I will repeat, not, in any way, shape, or form, wanting to compete against any of the local community services. We do not even want to be the first call to any of these, from these locations. What we are looking at is we would like to be the second call. We would like to be the call that when the services are tied up because of emergencies, or because there are already interfacility transfers, or they're trying to stay committed to the county, that instead of calling services that are an hour away, call us, we would like to be local. We have looked at a building in Buchanan on Route 20 South, we are in negotiations in that building, there's no confirmation that we're going to get that building yet because of the issues that were found during the building inspection. We are having an open dialogue with Upshore County, I know I've already scheduled for a meeting with them next Thursday. As a matter of fact, today, I gave the president of the board a list of my notes, just so he's aware, I'm trying to have an open dialogue. We just know how systems work, and we are familiar with that, and we are very professional. I want to work with those county services, surrounding county services also, and make sure they're aware that we're not here competing against them either. We still want those hospitals to call them first. We are just looking for, trips are being given to GM Care, given to services out of Morgantown, given to other areas. I also want to work with them and realize that, for them to realize that we are not here to decrease their staffing either, because that doesn't benefit anyone if we take people from them to work for us, or vice versa, because the goal is to be able to provide more service to this entire area and not take away from that. We are, at this point in time, getting ready to submit our application to the West Virginia Office of EMS. That application will be submitted tomorrow. And on that application, we are asking to be licensed for two advanced life support ambulances, which means that they will be staffed with paramedics and EMTs. We will be available 24 hours a day. If that building does not work out, we are going to continue to look for another building in Upshore County. And again, it isn't because we want to compete against Upshore County. Upshore County Emergency Squad has a fantastic reputation, it always has and always will. We are just looking at the fact that it's a central location for us, for the entire area. At that point in time, again, I'd want to work directly with Upshore County Emergency Squad and any of the other services, including fire departments. We want to work, be part of the joint LEPC, the Local Emergency Plan Committee, we've already asked to be part of that. We want to be involved with the emergency services system. We have the experience, we have the resources, we are a national company, and I know that people from the issue in Upshore County, there's been other private services that have came in and had, are making it. But the times have changed, the call volumes are different, reimbursement is different, the types of patients that get transported are different. It is also different in regards to national staffing, it is a huge problem that every service has, but we have the resources to ensure that we have staff. And to provide good benefits, additional resources to the counties, besides the ambulance division, we have numerous other divisions. And again, we're not here to compete in any way, shape, or form. So with that being said, like I said, our timetable right now is to submit our application to the state. We should get that back by the middle of April, or maybe later. We have confidence that we're going to pass that, when they do an inspection, they give you a percentage. We have confidence that we're going to be in the 90% top, because of the resources that we do have. So I would like to thank you for allowing me to discuss this with you and present it. I'm looking at any questions from anybody?
Commissioners, have any questions I wish to ask of Mr. Delaney? I think we're fine, Mr. Delaney. Thank you for your presentation. Is there any other public comment concerning this that would like to go on record?
Are we allowed to speak in?
If there's public comments to be made, you may take the podium there, so. Identify yourself for the viewing public.
I'm Rebecca Phillips, I'm the Office Manager for Upshore County Emergency Squad, also a county employee. I've been at Donnie for a long time, and the things that he said about EMS is true as far as staffing, it can be very difficult. We have had in the past couple of years some difficulty changing of directors, and paramedics are sometimes difficult to hire and keep because of wages and competing in other counties. But we've worked really hard, we've hired a new director, we're now up to full staff with our paramedics, and I feel that we're making every effort possible to give this county the best service we can possibly give. It's like I was telling my husband last night, we have five ambulances, some days you only need one or two, and some days you could use seven or eight, but it's a business where you pay people to wait primarily. The only objection that I really have with what Mr. Delaney has said, and it isn't anything that Mr. Delaney has done, but it is with someone that he mentioned in his letter, he said that he did not want to compete or take anybody away from our organization, when in fact, at least two of our people have come to us and said that Mr. Robey has approached them and wants them to leave our organization and go to work for their organization. And the rate of pay that he suggested is a lot more money than we could ever afford to pay. The two people were EMTs. And that is where our squad specifically has a problem with that type of thing, because if this company comes into town and they just want the overflow, and they just want to take care of the patients when we're busy, that's not a terrible thing. Patient care has to come first. But if they come in and they take our people from our nonprofit organization, or they take runs that, we have mutual aid agreements with all surrounding counties, and we currently do not do doctor's appointment visits or dialysis because we don't have the staffing, and we feel that emergency calls and interfacility transports take precedence for our organization. So we called upon the neighboring squads to provide those services. And a lot of those counties, if they didn't have those type of transports, according to what they've informed our board, they could possibly go under. So those are the areas of concern, primarily in EMS billing, the money that you make is within interfacility transports, because it's the mileage. The insurance companies will pay you the highest mileage percentage, and going up the road to Morgantown is 75 miles, Charleston is 114, and of course into Pittsburgh, you're looking at 140 some. So that's where you get your money, is from the mileage, and that's why they're primarily interested in the interfacility transports, because ultimately, that's where you get the most money. And if we did not have those to subsidize our organization, we very well could go under. So that's a concern there, being able to, because right now what the hospital does is if they cannot wait for us to get back, or if we only have one medic available and they have to go up the road, they will usually call Billington or Lewis County to see if they have a service that's available, and pretty much, they're able to take the call. We've been checking with our hospital, Dr. Blake and Ms. Deelbor, to see, are our people fulfilling your needs? And they have assured us for the last three months that they have no problems, no concerns. So I just wanted to put that out there. And the biggest concern, I think, right now is the fact that our people are being approached, and they are being offered wages that we can't compete with. So that is a huge concern. Does anybody else have anything from my organization that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation.
I'm Dirk Burgenside, President and Board Director of Upshore County Emergency Medical Services. I want to thank Mrs. Phillips, you can tell she's a very dedicated employee, and we're very lucky to have her with us. I also have the same concerns that Mrs. Phillips indicated. Also, Mr. Delaney for many years, and worked with him and so on, but it is a concern to us that, as much problem as we have acquiring experienced and good people with our service, that the possibility of losing them to a competitor of sorts bothers us a little bit. As Mrs. Phillips indicated, that is our main concern. And it's also a concern of Lewis and the county squad, and of course, Billington's here, and we all have the same concern, because as Mr. Delaney indicated, finding good, well-trained EMS personnel is very difficult. It's a tough job, paid and upgraded. Reminding us that Upshore County Emergency Medical Services has been a nonprofit organization here in Upshore County for the past 40 years, and we continue to want to be the best EMS provider we can be, charging the least amount of money that we can charge our public. So anything that we can do, whether it be welcoming this company as part of that team, or discouraging that, we want to do what's best for people of Upshore County. Now, thank the County Commissioner for letting us speak today.
Dirk, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In their cover letter to the Commissioner requesting that they're be able to make their presentation, they've indicated that they had filed or were going to file paperwork with the West Virginia Office of EMS. The considerations or the concerns that you have expressed, that Ms. Phillips expressed, are those taken into consideration by the state when they're processing the application?
Pretty much you can figure all the state is concerned about there being adequate EMS coverage in the state, and I understand that. They're going to make sure that whatever the company provides is going to be as well-equipped as possibly can be according to the guidelines from the state. You've got to understand, there's lots of guidelines there. There is a great big long legislative rule that has to do with the state code that provides for all kinds of guidelines that provide for what type of equipment and training is required to be an EMS agency in the state, and that's what they're concerned about.
Thank you.
And to clear up maybe some questions about the County Commission's authority in this, the County Commission, according to the EMS Code of, or Law of 1975, provides that the County Commissions within the state, that each one is responsible to ensure that any EMS service is provided. Beyond that, there's no other responsibility of the County Commission to approve, disapprove, or whatever, anything that comes in is just another business entity.
And past commissions, this established, was established, responsibility was assigned to the Commission. Upshore County Commissioners at that time provided the facility for the emergency squad to work, is that my understanding?
Yes, we've had an agreement for 40 years.
And I think our work crew, maintenance department goes down and occasionally will do maintenance work for them. Thank you, Dirk.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Mrs. Delaney, or anyone from, have a question concerning a response in connection with?
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Shane Zimmerman, I'm the Northeast Regional Director for Emergency Site Protection. I'd like to address a number of the current concerns that was brought up. Number one, our primary goal is not to be an emergency services provider. As a first, do you want to take any of that away from those agencies? Our primary goal is the interfacility transfers, and if by some chance the county or the surrounding areas was overtaxed on resources, meaning that they are, they're out, or they are unable to respond for whatever reasons, then by all means, if we're available and we want to work something out, sure, we can help out with that. Our company, we're a service provider in various areas, and one of the areas that we're looking into now obviously is the ambulance service. I can reiterate, excuse me, I can rebut one of the comments about the wages. None of the wages have been determined yet through our corporate offices, and nothing's going to be overinflated, that would be so outrageous to, we're not in the business of stealing employees away from other companies. We actually have a policy against taking employees from other companies, so the concerns regarding Mr. Robey could just have been in the conversation, so I'll follow up on that. But again, one of the things that Mrs. Phillips mentioned was that patient care is the first priority. Well, with that said, if we're another provider, and you have a patient that needs to be transported from A to B, and we're the closest available unit and we're here for your services, why not use us? We're only adding two units to the area, and I believe that with the experience and the financial stability of our company, we can be an asset for this community. So with that said, I will follow up on some of the concerns that were brought up, and if anybody has any questions for me, they can give me a call. We do have a local number now. Pardon?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So it seems like the interfacilities is maybe the gravy of the calls that come in. Is your intention just to take the interfacility, or if you get called to southern Upshore County on an ambulance call, are you going to?
We will, if our phone rings for services, we'll answer that call, whether it's interfacility transfer, we have, Mr. Delaney has been working, we've been working on mutual aid agreements for the entire surrounding area, and once these items are placed, we can set up a mutual agreement with all these other companies. If Upshore County, I believe she said she has five units, if they've got five units out, you're running calls and they're all committed, and the next available unit is ESP, and we are six minutes away versus a unit coming out of Lewis County, no offense to Lewis County, but closest services, then we can support Upshore, we can support Lewis. We're a supporting company. We're not here to take anything away from them, and that's why we wanted to let everybody know, we're here to be a part of the community, not to replace anybody.
Do I understand you would say that, I mean, or you just say that though you may be physically located in Upshore County, you would provide service to Lewis, other adjacent counties?
If we receive that call, of course, we would support anybody that's willing to, we want to do business with everybody. We know we're a community-based organization, we want to be here for everybody. I'm sorry, we're a private company, but you know, our I'm sorry, we're a private company, but you know, our goal is to support anybody who needs the help. And I'm fifteen, sixteen years in Fire and Emergency Services Disaster Response Team, as well as I worked in Iraq for two years under a government contract as Fire prevention and Emergency Services. So I understand contract compliance, and I understand the concern where other companies that are not-for-profit, where the income that they make off of various interfacility transfers or other resources is what support their organization. And with us being a private company, it's quite the opposite. We're in the, quite frankly, the company's in business to make money, but we're not here to put anybody out of business. We're here to join these other organizations in whatever we can provide for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would you have any comments from the public? If you'd like to come up?
Yes, I would. Excuse me. Good morning. My name is Mary Alba. I'm a member of City Council, but I'm also a resident here of Upshur County. And I've been working with the city now for a long time on volunteerism, okay? We have a limited amount of people these days who want to be firemen, and policemen, and EMS, and these people are what we call volunteers. And volunteers are what West Virginians do. It's not always for profit, but it's a business, okay? They take a lot of pride in theirs, and they, these people take a lot of pride in theirs. But I'm concerned with our volunteer fire departments who are going to be responding, or would this company be able to respond if there was an emergency in that aspect? If all the other ambulances were busy, would they respond with the volunteer fire department?
EMS assistant thing is what she's referring to.
I can answer that, if you're for permission. Yes, ma'am. Our goal with the service, again, it'd be nice to be able to say we work for profit, for profit, that's just not the case. But the owners, the management staff, our people that have been involved with EMS and our fire chiefs, and we, our commitment is to support the local fire departments. We are not allowed to, and Becky or Dirk can reiterate this, you cannot support one department without supporting another, because that gets you into problems with issues of Medicare and kickback and stuff like that. So our service is going to be offered to everyone. If we respond, we will assist every volunteer fire department. We will provide them whatever resources we have at any point in time. So it doesn't matter which department it would be, it wouldn't matter if it's an emergency or non-emergency. If they need training programs, again, we have to stay within compliance, so does every other squad, but we can still provide training programs. You just have to make sure that you don't break any laws, I mean Medicare laws, and we are there to provide services to them. We are not, our company is, I guess this way to look at this, is with an ambulance service, including Mr. Burinside and Mrs. Phillips, both can tell you that an ambulance service doesn't make a large amount of profit. The money just is not there. It's not that this company, we're going to be relying on this ambulance service to support our company. This, the ambulance service itself will not support our company. There is no way. So we are just looking at it as another avenue for us to provide additional services. We don't, we're not going to lose, we don't want to lose money, but on the same token, we know that the profit market isn't there for anyone, whether you're a volunteer service, whether you're a private service, whether you're a public service. It just isn't. Because with Medicare and stuff, you're only being reversed, they can reverse the same amounts we do. We don't get any more. It doesn't...
I understand that.
So yes, we will support the volunteer fire departments one hundred percent.
Have you reached out to the fire department, the Buckhannon Fire Department, and all the volunteer fire departments throughout Upshur County?
No, we have just started reaching out to the volunteer fire departments because we're not licensed yet, and we wanted to make sure that how we do this is through the proper channels, start with County Commission, and then working our way down to the other locations. Just, we really want to be upfront. I have talked to the other county services, I've been upfront with them from the beginning, and I am going to continue to do that. We just haven't talked to the services yet, just because we're not licensed yet. So we are actually at the beginning stages, but it is a requirement that you be able to provide those services to those departments.
Commissioners, I would like to request that we do, as a County Commission, reach out to the volunteer fire departments and get their input on this before a license is issued.
We have no licensing...
We have no licensing process?
No, this is tied with the state.
It's with the state. I really think, though, we need to reach out to them, because you know, they're the backbone and have been for forty-seven years, along with the EMS, and I think they need to be given an opportunity to have their say. Maybe they should have been here today, I don't know, but I just wanted to speak up on behalf of the fire department here for the city, and all of the volunteers out there, EMS also. And no, no bad thing about any of you guys, is everybody wants to make a living out there. But sometimes, it's just a little bit different when you're working with a volunteer fire department. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, um...
Yes? I can certainly appreciate her comments. I began my fire service career as a volunteer, and with Mr. Robey's commitment and his involvement in Adrian and Rock Cave and some of these other agencies, Mr. Robey is very adamant about working with all these local agencies. I just want to make sure we have that very clear. Mr. Delaney made it hopefully obvious for everyone, we're transparent, we've got nothing to hide, we're not here to take anything away from anybody, again, to support. This actually is an exciting opportunity for our company, because as the Northeast Regional Director, I quite frankly, don't get the opportunity too much to work out in the field, and I'm looking forward to getting out and meeting some folks here in the Upshur area, because my office is stationed over in Jane Lou, so I don't get a chance to come down here this much, but this opportunity is going to bring us down in this region for me personally, which I happen to like this area. And this reminds me of home. I grew up in a very small town, population was fifteen hundred, and went to school with seventy-three other seniors. So I understand small-town community. I was volunteer firefighter at the age of sixteen. My parents had to sign a waiver to let me even ride the first truck. So there's nothing quite like the heart of a volunteer, and even though we are a for-profit company, one of the three owners is a volunteer fire chief from Medicine Park, Oklahoma, and so he is, he is committed to the Fire and Emergency Services side, but at the same time, the company is also here to make a few bucks. But the nice part about bringing the ESP in with this is that we're not going to get one of the, we're not going to be in one of these situations where we're saying, ESP, can you have a, you know, Lewis County needs help on a call. Well, what you going to pay us for? That's not how it works. You need help, we're going to help you, and that's just how it's going to be. The area of income is going to be primarily the interfacility transfers. We're not looking to run calls and take anything away from the emergency services and then start sending bills in, that's just not how we operate. So anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to field any questions regarding our operations and our intent.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Yes, sir.
It's now ten o'clock, and we have our next appointment. Mr. Kevin Campbell, Upshur County resident, who wishes to address concerns regarding the Atlantic Coast Pipeline.
Looks like the PowerPoint...
Yes, it's a PowerPoint, and I, it's the one that I've used at the last two meetings in Rock Cave and down in Ireland to express my concerns as a firefighter and EMT, but also my concerns for our community as past president of the CBB and a current director. This pipeline, based on the engineering data that I've been able to obtain from sources other than Dominion, the evacuation zone of a forty-two-inch pipeline is two miles, which is kind of a misnomer, because you don't evacuate from a pipeline explosion. There is no warning. The initial incident is the explosion, and then the secondary incident is that fireball when it ignites. And once that happens, with that pressure and that amount of gas, first responders are going to be limited to access from about two miles away. The areas within a quarter mile to a half mile are going to be totally incinerated. The blast radius itself is going to be about eighteen hundred feet. That's just from the gas coming out of the ground, out of the pipe, blowing the dirt away. The proximity of Upshur County High School is less than a quarter mile from the entrance. This is just a very bad idea. It's actually right next to the water tower that provides the backup water for the high school for fire suppression. It would be the first to go if it blew there. I'm trying to get somebody to put together a little animation of this disaster which could unfold. I understand that Dominion wants to take the shortest route between two points, but we need to insist that this pipeline be relocated. I don't think we can stop it, but we can get it moved. A few other points, and some of these come from an Ohio State University study, to help communities in Southeast Ohio deal with the oil and gas boom. I'm only looking at part of the study's relation safety and emergency response. Road access to this construction site would be extremely limited in some areas. To the first responders, first responders in those areas have the necessary equipment to respond in a timely fashion. Looking at it, somebody is three miles out in the woods, somewhere down over ten mile, and they're trapped, and we have to rescue them and get them out of there. We don't have the equipment. You can't land a helicopter in a freshly excavated construction zone, and we're horribly lacking in communications equipment. Now, we don't have the right equipment. How can we plan for delayed response times due to truck traffic? This thing is going over Sago Road twice, it's going, it's going under Sago twice, it's going under Twenty, it's going under Brush and Fork, it's going under the Cannon River.
There you go.
Numerous streams. It's going all the way down to Queens, okay? There's only one way to Queens, and that's Tolman's Hill Road. All that construction equipment. This thing is six, the width of a six-lane highway with the median and the shoulders. It's a hundred and twenty-five feet wide, going all the way through Upshur County. That's a lot of mud. And I'm concerned what it's going to do for tourism. It's going to be two years of this nightmare, and what we're left with is this six-lane highway to nowhere that nobody can use for anything. We've also got issues with demand camps. It's going to put an increased load on law enforcement, it's going to put an increased load on our justice system. I know Dominion's been around saying, hey, the county's going to get a whole bunch of money from this, but those figures are being challenged, because they have one report that says the county's going to get two and a half million dollars a year in year three. And they have a second report that they have done themselves that says the entire state of West Virginia is going to get less than a hundred and fourteen thousand a year. It's a big discrepancy. So Dominion has been required by FERC to back up their numbers, but in the meantime, we need to be very cautious, and we should really be looking at what this is going to cost us. Because it's, it may not be an income producer, it may just drain us. I worked at Irish County Emergency Squad for a year and a half, over there in what they call Frack Central.
Frack and Stan.
You can't get an ambulance through traffic, you can't get a fire truck through traffic. People's lives are endangered. This pipeline has the explosive power of an attack bomb. We do not have within West Virginia the capabilities of extinguishing the fire that would follow the explosion. The only way to cool this thing down is with water bombers. We don't have any. Five hundred and fifty miles of unexploded bomb, three feet below the surface of the ground, in the wilderness, really easy to find, just follow the unpaged six-lane highway. How many people do you know personally that have enough munitions to breach it? I know lots of guys. Give them a twelve-pack, and they'll go out and start taking shots at it. Speaking of breaching it, with a real small hole, it'll sound like a train list, fourteen hundred and forty pounds of steel. You'll hear it from a quarter of a mile. That's easy to locate, relatively easy to fix when they shut it down. But you only need to put a hole in that pipe that is more than four times the thickness, and it'll pop like a balloon, because it's under stress. And the stress in rural areas is much lower, it's only half of what it is in what they consider high-population areas. When they're going near a big city or a high residential area, they have to use a thicker wall pipe. Out here, they don't. And that high school, the capacity of it is not considered when they're talking about how this, how far it has to be from high occupancy, because they only take them to a parent residential. They don't even consider the high school, because nobody lives there. Yet, Dominion is perfectly legal to run where it is, but it's not common sense, it's not best practices of the industry. In Canada, it would have to be three kilometers away. There's a few other issues. There's only currently planned two shut-off valves for the entire county. One is over by Light Chapel, and the one before that's back in Lewis County at mile six and a half, it's mile twenty-six and a half at Light Chapel, and then the next one's down in Queens, thirteen miles away. So if there was a breach, those valves would close, but the amount of gas in that line would burn for days. Depending on where it burst, it could be even longer than a week. And all we can do at that point is respond to the perimeter of this fire line, which is going to be fifteen miles long. If we can get to it, we can't do anything. This is going to burn out of control. We don't have the resources, we don't have the manpower. We're going to affect streams, creeks, rivers, all of that. Just the truck traffic. I mean, if they're working it down around Sago, how do they get there? They're either going to come in Brush and Fork, or they're coming up Twenty.
Have you scheduled a meeting, or have you made in contact with the Board of Education to provide...
No, they're next on my list, after your suggestion at the Siva Dinner. Sis and I have also found out that it's going to take roughly eleven hundred truckloads per mile to backfill the trench, because they can't put rock in. It'll damage the dialectic coating on the pipe, that causes it to corrode faster. It will damage the dielectric coating on the pipe that causes it to corrode faster and fail faster. And, and the damage in that coating is one happened to that recent incident in Brook County where that pipe was less than a year old and failed because of corrosion. We've got some really wet areas this thing is going through. As I said, it'll take 1,100 truckloads a mile because they have to backfill with loose fill or sand, or their choice is to use fly ash, not many of them. We, we have to absolutely prevent them from doing that. But 1,100 truckloads per mile, we don't have sand around here. We either have to make it or truck it in. And all those trucks going the length of this pipeline to our county? I mean, I, I don't believe we can stop the pipeline, but we got to get them to, to move it. We got to get them to, to do it logically. Build us a bypass road first, something. The other thing that I've found in talking to our communities and people at some of these other meetings is citizens are aware that this is going to have a huge impact on most of us and, and some beneficial value for a few property owners, which, which is great. But other communities have, have leveraged these companies. Clarksburg got their new recreation complex funded mostly by Antero. We want a new ref complex. And, and some of our people have said, hey, if we're going to let this through here, let's at least get something out of it. We, maybe we're, we've got an opportunity here to improve our community if we have to accept this risk, but let's mitigate the risk by, by locating it sensibly. Just a couple other issues. I'd say it's a 550-mile-long terrorist target. It really is. Anybody can breach this thing. If nature doesn't do it, it can be done deliberately. But it's, it's right next to your property.
It goes through mine.
It goes through yours. You might not be able to buy insurance anymore.
And I'd rather it wouldn't be going through mine.
People in Pennsylvania are finding out that if it's on their neighbor's property, they can't buy insurance. And, and so their property buildings go down. It's like having a, a frac site next to you. You might have your home foreclosed on if you got the wrong mortgage company because they don't want to be within a mile of a frac site anymore. So if you allow it on your property, you might even be responsible for your neighbor's A scratch in the dielectric coating or a failure in the impressed current system or removal of sacrificial atoms can lead to rapid catastrophic failure. These sacrificial atoms on these pipes are magnesium.
Which is valuable.
And, and they're accessible through a manhole for inspection. People are going to be out in the woods stealing them, they're selling for scrap metal, and they remove the corrosion protection from the pipeline. Inspections right now are primarily up to the pipeline companies. They kind of write the rules, they kind of write their own regulations, and we're at their mercy. And, and believe me, we're, we're really expendable. They're making a bunch of money running this gas through here and, and we're getting pretty much nothing for it. I used to be a pilot down in Florida a few years ago, well, a lot of years ago. And the first thing you do when you're up in a plane solo, the thing you constantly do is find a place to land at in an emergency. And if I'm up there and I see a 550-mile-long, six-lane-wide clearing, guess what? That's where I'm going down. I don't know there's a pipeline three foot below the surface. I'm, I'm going to be whatever it takes to detonate it at that point. There's much better practices that, that should be met. We should have dedicated transmission corridors like other countries have. You don't have schools near it, you don't have residences near it, you're, you're not endangering national forests and stuff. We need more oversight, we need inspection, you know? Maybe we should appoint somebody on a county level to make sure that every foot of this thing is being properly put together because otherwise we're, we're just sitting dimes. We don't know. Yeah, there's some good pipeline companies out there, but let's face it, usually it's a lot better to get the job. They, there's been a lot of disasters recently, there's, there's more on the horizon, and 42-inch pipelines are a new thing. There's very little industry experience with them. There's no industry experience in this terrain, not where the Guinea is. And for Lewis County, they got two pipelines going through there, which is insane. If they need two pipelines and they can justify two pipelines, why aren't they putting them in the same ditch? Why go through $500 million of additional expense to have a second ditch so you can compete with some other company? Because they're tying into the same transco-line down south. So I'm raising questions. Every chance I get, I'm trying to point out to people that there's a whole lot of stupidity out there that thinks we're, we're really dominant and just run over us, I think. And that's why I'm here, to make you guys aware. Next Saturday, we'll be making people aware of the, uh, computer room, yeah. And I, I hope that, that we can collectively come together. The only way to stop, the only way to have any input is to comment to FERC. And it needs to be done either in writing or online. All those comments that are made to FERC have to be addressed by Dominion. They don't have to be answered to the people that asked the question, but they have to be answered to FERC. So if, if you question the number of jobs that it's going to bring, if you question the amount of revenue it's going to bring, if you question how much dirt it's going to take to fill the trench, they have to respond. And...
Does FERC make the responses public?
Yes. So we, we need, strength in numbers is the only way to do everything about this. But let's, let's get it moved away from the high school, let's make sure it's three kilometers from town and a hospital. Maybe they'll get it away from Buddy Brady, too. I mean, if there's a major problem where it goes under 20, the south part of the county's cut off from the north part of the county for a long time. I mean, I, I can no longer have backup from Buchanan, I can no longer get EMS from town. Must go around somehow, but I mean, just the construction traffic and trying to get emergency equipment through is going to be unbelievable for two years. So that's, that's my 10 cents worth. One other thing on the previous conversation, as a volunteer firefighter that needs EMS response and, and this whole thing with emergency site protection, um, and I, and I don't have a favor in this, I have an application in with ESP and I have an application in with MAC, okay? But we've had a problem with Dinesh County coming and doing transports, they do a lot of bariatric transports. We have a lot of bariatric patients in Upsher County. They will send out a crew without sufficient manpower to lift that patient, load them, and then they want the volunteer firefighters to come out and help them. And, and we're overtaxed. We, we, we don't support them for loading, we don't support jam care for loading, we do support Upsher EMS. Just something else to take into consideration. Because we, we can't afford to burn out what little manpower we have on unnecessary assistance that, that we're getting nothing back in return. Upsher EMS, we have a mutual aid agreement and they are required to be on scene at every fire to take care of us. So we will do whatever we can to take care of them. And, and yeah, sometimes it's inconvenient because they will send out a driver and an EMT that have no chance of ever lifting this patient and getting them in the ambulance. We absolutely have to help them. But it, it's just another issue to consider for the volunteer firefighters to consider. And they should get involved in that. Anyway, thank you for your time. Anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment, if I may.
Six more minutes.
Okay. I'll be, I'll be quick. I didn't count my period that you would say anything, I need to probably put my mouth shut. So thank you again. I'm concerned about one bigger or second issue. There's one thing that we cannot live about, and that's water. And this pipeline is going right underneath our major source of water for Upsher County. You know it as well as I do. There's going to be what a big, I think they're digging it now, are they not?
No, not yet.
Not yet?
The route, route hasn't been approved.
It's been approved. Jay Hong, the city engineer, is talking with them, working with them and trying to do the best he can to make sure that they're being smart, because you know, they're way above me with all that building and stuff like you. But anyways, I don't like the thought of all that going underneath our water. Because what happens when something, what would happen is when, if there was an explosion or whatever, all that's going to affect Mount Justa River there or all the tributaries in our water supply. The Buchanan River is Upsher County's, in the city of Buchanan, and a lot of people in other counties, major source of water. So we need to be very, very protective of that resource. And, and that would probably be brought up, too, at the meeting on March 28th. And then I wanted to say one other thing, if I could. The county commission is, has the authority to provide for the elimination of hazards to public health and safety, in addition to all other powers and duties now conferred by law upon county, upon county commissions. Commissions are hereby authorized to enact ordinances, issue orders, and take other appropriate and necessary actions for the elimination of hazards to public health and safety and to abate or cause to be abated anything which the commission decide, determines to be a public nuisance. The ordinance may provide for a misdemeanor penalty for its violation. The ordinances may be, may further be applicable to the county in its entirety or to a portion of the county as considered appropriate by the county commission. Are we, as a county commission, going to give our own direction to these people that are building and coming across the land, coming close to the schools? Are we having an input to this now in the early stages of, of this? Or is that...
That's the purpose for the FERC public comment period, I believe. Of course, you have any...
Well, it is.
But if, beyond that, at least, beyond that, I don't dispute that there is language that authorizes us to take that type of step. But at the same time, there are federal statutes, there are state statutes which may impact our ability if we were so to choose on that. So it's a, it's a matter of, there's procedures to go through on these serious concerns that you read, these are serious indeed. But they should be viewed, they should be addressed, and hopefully they will be. But we'll have those public information hearings that, that I'll be attending the one at the American Legion. There are about five or six of them, I think, four of them, I think, have been scheduled throughout the, throughout the last several months. And I'm certain that there'll be some response from Dominion or other companies as well, either whether to the public or whether to FERC or any other regulatory body. And these are not issues that strictly involve Upsher County as well. You have, you have other counties and other states involved, so it's not a, not a simple solution. It is very complex, obviously. But certainly as commissioners, we will follow the progress or lack of progress depending on, on the issue and pay attention to what is going on. Thank you for bringing your information to us as a means of letting us know some of the concerns that are present out there and some of the potential downsides to, to this Are there any comments? Well, we have about two minutes before we have a, a interview, I believe, exit interview at 10:30. I think administrator has a comment to make to the public relative to the availability of the public to remain in the courtroom.
We will have the executive session within this room, so everyone else will have to exit this room and then we'll reconvene after the executive session. But I think we'll go into a short recess for the next two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes.
Okay.
Recession, recess for two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.